Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Lacey Township Caucus Meeting, November 10th, 6:30 PM. I'll read the statement and the rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Adequate notice this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public clause 1975. Said notice was advertised at Hansbury Park Press on the Beacon and was posted on a bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, best practices inventory checklist.
Annually, myself and the CFO are required by the state of New Jersey to do a best practices inventory checklist. It is based on questions that the state of New Jersey submits to all municipalities. And depending on the rating and the score that you get depends on whether or not you get, in some instances, state, all of your state aid. In Lacy's instance, it would be our energy tax receipt money. So we always try to make sure that we score high enough to be able to get our 100%. And we did the basic questions. They come into, they deal with personnel, they deal with budgeting, procurement, transparency, capital projects, cybersecurity, shared services, fire districts if you had them, we don't here in Lacy, environmental questions, financial administration. This year, they included American Rescue Plan Act questions on there as well. Linda and I were very happy to say that we are getting 100% of our state aid money, but I just do need to pass it before the governing body, that you guys have seen it, you've read it, and that I sign into the state FAS system and to sign off on the inventory checklist that it's been submitted to the governing body. So as long as you guys are okay with it, we're just going to move forward.
Absolutely. Good work. Always.
Can I do have an add-on this evening?
Yes, please.
The Lacey Pride Lacrosse is having sign-ups for lacrosse registration. They want to close signs throughout the community from November 22nd to November 28th and December 20th through December 26th. I just need a motion to approve that.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And that's all I have to add on. Mayor, do you have anything to add on?
Negative.
Okay. Then we can adjourn this meeting if you're ready to.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next.
Item number two, Lacey Township Township Meeting, November 10th, 2021. Adequate notice this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public clause 1975. Said notice was advertised at Hansbury Park Press, the Beacon, and was posted in a bulletin board showing the time and the place of the meeting while a salute to the flag and a moment of silence.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, first reading ordinance 2021-26, amending chapter 211 land development fees.
An ordinance of the township of Lacey County versus state of New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter 211 to land development fees, escrow deposits, and inspection fees, so as to amend various sections as it relates to escrow fees for subdivision and land use applications. This is a recommendation from the planning board with regards to subdivision and land use applications. These fees are posted by the developers or the residents that are making application before the board. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolow?
Yes. Item number two, second reading ordinance 2021-25, setting the salaries for non-bargaining unit employees.
An ordinance of the township of Lacey County versus state of New Jersey, amending an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance of the township of Lacey County versus state of New Jersey, fixing and determining salaries, wages, and compensation to officers, employees, and members of the governing body in the township." These are the non-unionized employees. The bulk of this is your management staff and your assistant department heads. This is for the year 2020 and 2021. The total increase for those two years is 5%.
Move it. Second reading. Open the floor. Public comment?
Sheen, not motion to close the floor.
Second.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolow?
Yes, with noted abstention on Ms. Laura. Item number three, resolution 2021-279, authorizing a special item of revenue in the budget.
An ordinance of the township of Lacey County versus state of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue in appropriation in the 2021 municipal budget known as in chapter 159 of the township of Lacey pursuant to NJSA 48,4-87. This is taking money, this is an authorized capital purchase through the CARES Act for the first aid squads for automated Lucas devices. Prior to us being able to purchase these items, we have to get approval from the county who is administering the CARES Act. They have approved for us to get eight Lucas devices for the first aid squads. So this is contactless CPR, which is approved under the CARES Act. So now, in order for us to spend the money, we have to place it in our budget. And the amount that the county is giving us for this is $142,116.80. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolow?
Yes. Item number four, resolution 2021-280, authorizing the placement of a lien for property maintenance.
An ordinance of the township of Lacey County versus state of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning the cost incurred in the removal of debris cleaning up of the property located at 119 Driftwood Lane and authorizing placement of a lien against said property for said costing amount of $84.56. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolow?
Yes. Item number five, resolution 2021-281, authorizing the cancellation of taxes due to disabled veteran exemption.
An ordinance of the township of Lacey County versus state of New Jersey, authorizing the tax code due to cancel 2021 taxes due on a property granted to 100% disabled veterans' exemption and refund the resulting credit balance. This is on block 889, lot 46, and block 1640.05, lot 11.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolow?
Yes. Item number six, resolution 2021-282, authorization of refund of deposit monies.
An ordinance of the township of Lacey County versus state of New Jersey, authorizing the refunds to deposits held for the use of municipal facilities. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolow?
Yes. Item number seven, resolution 2021-283, authorizing payment of township bills.
An ordinance of the township of Lacey County versus state of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $10,392,980.09. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes, and I'll stand on D0400 letter.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolow?
Yes. Item number eight, motion approved township meeting minutes of October 28th, 2021.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number nine, motion approved caucus meeting minutes of October 28th, 2021.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 10, monthly reports.
Municipal clerk's office for the month of October collected receipts in the amount of $5,514.65. Municipal court for the month of September collected receipts in the amount of $9,017.40. The Department of Community Development for the month of September collected receipts in the amount of $59,528 for the month of September. Motion to accept the reports is read.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 11, motion approved raffle license application for the Ocean Air Italian American Club.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have some add-ons if you don't mind, yes. First is resolution 284. It's a resolution of the township of Lacey County versus state of New Jersey urging the legislatures and the governor to enact the law banning single-use plastic and paper bags.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
No. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolow?
Yes.
Next is resolution 285. It's a resolution of the township of Lacey County versus state of New Jersey authorizing appointment of George Pochios Esquire as a hearing officer for the township of Lacey for a personnel matter.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtolow?
Yes.
All right. Now, I'm done.
Comments from the committee? Committee, Mayor McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. Got some short stuff here. Lacey Girl Soccer is playing for the state championship. I'm not sure when. Yesterday, they were down 2-0 at the half, and they came back to win 3-2. So congratulations to them and good luck, the state champions. Tomorrow's Veterans Day, and I get to go out with Tori from Backwards Flag, and she's invited me out to the gun range out in Jackson to shoot with a bunch of veterans. I'm looking forward to that. And then coming back to Backwards Flag where my campaign is coming up with some money to pay for some beers for the veterans. So if you're a veteran and you want some beers, come on down to Backwards Flag in the afternoon. Got something here about the 150. Excuse me. There's a community Thanksgiving, which is Saturday, November 13th, which is this Saturday, at 1:00 to 3:00 at Gillie Park, Uffey Wallace Parks. Bring your lunch and enjoy the afternoon with your neighbors. Activities are planned for each park. So if you want to register for that, you just have to go to the LaceyRec website. And I do want to thank the county for coming up with that, what are they, Lucas? Are they called Lucas?
Lucas devices.
Lucas devices, because this is something that, when you talk to our EMS people and so forth, this is something they have been talking about. These are not cheap things and trying to come out of our budget and making sure that we have them to protect our Lacey residents was kind of hard. I'm just very happy that the county came up with that. And Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Committee McDonald. Committee and Dykoff?
Thank you very much. There is a ceremony tomorrow, 11:00 AM, out here for the veterans, and I did get a message from Rolling Thunder, and they urge, and this is a good thing, they urge residents to bring their children out and teach the children, you know, about Veterans Day and what our veterans mean. And on a kind of related note, today is the birthday of the Marines.
Forty-six.
Forty-six.
Yep. And which is amazing, and as, you know, as I think we all realize, we thank our veterans, we thank our armed forces, and, you know, without them, who knows where we would be. The other thing I want to thank is residents of Lacey Township for seeing fit to return myself and my running mate back to office for another three years. It was a great turnout. I want to thank those who ran against us, running a nice race, gentlemen. It's tough to put yourself out there for the candidate and for your family. And going back to what Mr. McDonald said about the county, I just want to touch a little bit on some of the projects you see around town, and the two in particular are the one right here on Manchester, the reconfiguration and the light, and then, of course, the traffic light and repaving of the one at Rarory Avenue. And whether people know it or not, those are both county roads, and all of that work was done with county money. Well, you know, we all pay a lot of county taxes, so it's nice to get something back for the money that we pay. So that's all I have. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Committee and Kenneth.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a good segue, Mark, because I wanted to talk about one of those little scene things in the township that sort of makes a town functional. So those that have been here a long time know that the Starbucks recently opened, and before that, it used to be a bank. And that bank was here for, you know, it was always a bank, but it was here a long time, and it predated a lot of our codes. And if you recall, that bank had three entrances, one on Lacey Road, one on Manchester, and another one off of Veterans Way, which is now no longer there. But the board at the time, you know, there's no objectors there. When Starbucks came before the board, the, you know, they wanted to keep, you know, sort of keep it as it is, just sort of update what, you know, update their site with landscaping and traditional things. But the board was, you know, there's some deliberation and discussion over whether to close the entrance on Manchester Avenue to eliminate three, you know, one of the entrances and just make everybody go through Lacey Road or behind the building. And like, it wasn't, you know, there was some discussion and disagreement, and developer, you know, didn't say he was going to pull the, you know, but hemming and hawing about whether that would, you know, fly with his bosses. But we made the decision to have him close that entrance off, and if anybody has seen Starbucks operating, you know, over this past week, two weeks, that the queue for the drive-thru is backed up as bad as it was on, for Dunkin' Donuts. And so, you know, my point of this is that where the, if, you know, if, I don't want to say, you know, if the right decision wasn't made, you would have had traffic backing up just from where that drive, just from where you order, you would have been having cars stacked, not only, you know, inside the parking lot there, but they would have been stacking on Manchester Avenue. And my point is that we try to really get, you know, you know, hesitate to use smart, smart, experienced people on these boards so they understand some of the larger repercussions on the township. And that was one of them. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thanks so much. And to dovetail with that and keep in line with our businesses, first, I want to say congratulations to Committee McDonald and Committee and Dykoff. They've been here for many years, along with Sal Armato and Skip Peters at the school board. Everybody ran a great campaign. It was an overwhelming victory by all. What's disappointing is the state overall, 37% of the people, that's not the case in Lacey Township. People really come out, they want their voices heard over here, really, really proud of that. And that's because we have good candidates, and it's easy to see and something to be proud of. Specifically regarding what Committee and Kenneth was talking about with businesses, in the last two weeks alone, we've opened Three Flags Grill, Chipotle, Starbucks, Taco Holic's, and that's just food service. So we're continuing to be a destination for business here on the Route 9 corridor. Businesses are ratables. Recently, I spoke with Mayor Hill of Tom's River, Mayor Reina of Jackson at a regional consortium for businesses, just constantly trying to attract business over here and nourish business. We have a great application process where we take businesses in under our wing, give them the tutelage and education, and we walk them through it. I'm not sure other municipalities do that, but we do, and that's because of the great land use boards we have. Of course, Mark's on one of them, Steve's on one, Tim has ran one for many, many years as chairman of the zoning board of adjustment. So there's no shortage of academic capital and people helping our businesses here, and it's something we could be really proud of. My colleagues talked about tomorrow, and 11:11 at 11, so right at 11:00 AM, right out front here in Bicentennial Park. We hope that you're there. We hope that you'll bring your children and some other folks there. It's always a little bit hard to keep it together when you're behind a microphone because our veterans are there. It means a lot, and I always want our veterans to tell the story and not schools or somebody else. I don't want that story to get changed and beat up as it goes around the table and down through generations. I want them telling it because they were there and they were knee-deep in it. So I'll say that tomorrow like I say it every year, and I hope to see you there. Lastly, Happy Thanksgiving and thanks for coming out tonight. With that, I'll open the floor. Public comment?
Regina, do you have anything?
Regina's not shy.
Let's see, do I have to look at this? It's way over my head. We have so many, don't worry. Mr. Williams, is it?
Top one. There you go.
Regina DeSensis, Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. I have some questions because I missed quite a few meetings this year due to conflicts and being away, but there's been talk for quite a while about a new municipal complex. And one of the things I want to ask is the new, the KFC that was bought and renovated, is that replacing Community Hall?
Yes.
Am I correct with that?
Yes.
Okay. So my next question is, now that Community Hall's been replaced, it will go up for sale, right? That's the plan?
The governing body decides to do so. That's not my...
It's not decided yet. Okay.
No, we still, there's still paperwork, and we need to get surveys, we need to get appraisals.
And that leads into my next question.
We'll be addressing that in next year's budget as a part of the property.
All right, so there's no selling price, no asking price yet because there's no appraisal. Okay. Do you know if that property can be sold privately, realtor auction?
I'll leave that to the attorney to discuss how it's done legally in accordance with statute.
How does that happen?
Well, it would be by public auction.
Oh, it would be by a public auction, not like with a real estate agent and a sign out front?
Ken...
It could?
There is a possibility that a realtor could bring a buyer, and there is a possibility that commission could be paid, but we're not sure how it would be structured at this time.
When you say an auction, that, does that mean like by sealed bids or people just come together and then they...
By a public auction.
A public...
The statute provides by open public...
Because it's a buildable piece of property under accord of the zoning.
Uh-huh, okay. And is there a timeline for that? It'll be early 2022, you think?
We still, as a governing body, have to discuss this once we come up with an appraisal value and what we would like to list it for.
Okay. Now, this particular...
I have some organizations that don't want to leave that building.
Do they have a choice?
No, they won't come January. Right now, I'm giving them the choice, but come January.
There's a wrecking ball coming.
They're like, we want to stay where we are. So I'm kind of playing gingerly with them right now.
Going across the street is not a merely...
No, you're right.
It's literally across the street. This particular property here, it was discussed a while back by someone. Was there ever a deed restriction on this property that it can't be sold or something?
This property, absolutely not.
This can still be sold?
Yeah, why couldn't it? There's no...
You're talking about Community Hall or what are you talking about?
No, this particular property. We're standing right now.
There's no deed restrictions on this property.
So this municipal building complex could be sold as well? Okay.
Yes.
There was some issues I noticed on social media. I believe Amanz is here tonight, but there was some problems on the rail trail. Was that taken care of?
Yes.
Because I don't go down there very often, but if I do, I want to know what's there.
About, we, about maybe a month, month and a half ago, the sheriff, myself, Commissioner Quinn, and a couple of the sheriff's deputies, we walked the rail trail down there. They have, our chief has put our police on the quads, they're up and down the rail trail now.
Oh, okay.
The sheriff's got cameras up, he's got drones up going over there. We're not the only town that has a problem with the rail trail. It's all up and down the rail trail. So I do know that I did talk to Commissioner Quinn about it. They're coming up with a complete strategic plan to deal with those...
Issues. All right, because I use it on occasion. I just want to know what I was up against because I don't use it very often, but I read about it, so I wanted to inquire.
You know, Regina, if I may, the frustrating thing about that is there are resources at the county for homelessness and addiction. I mean, there's funding pathways for those folks, but we can't require it exactly right.
Can't make a go.
And it's unfortunate.
It is very unfortunate. I mean, I do remember going through there once and seeing a couple of people, but I didn't know they were like living there or anything, but I thought they were just fishing.
We walked about, like I said, a while back, down way past that, we came into a campsite that looked like something out of a TV show. I mean, they had little buildings built in the whole...
All right, all right, okay. If I go down there, I want to be prepared, but I don't think, I hope I won't see that.
That's been taken care of. They knocked them down, so...
Okay. Now, I want to congratulate Mayor Kurtolow that the Happy Weed question did not pass.
Just for the record, I didn't ask you to say that.
I know, but I'm very happy about it.
The people spoke. I want to put it behind us.
I'm very happy that the people spoke loud and clear on that. I have traveled up and down the eastern seaboard this year, and it is so funny to be here, there, and everywhere, and you see all these clever Happy Weed stores. They are all over the place. It is not a good thing to have. I saw it all over Florida. Churches, I want to speak for a moment about churches. As everyone knows, this past year and a half's been a hard one, and when the governor closed places of worship, I took extreme exception to that. And I just want to let people know, it's safe to come back to St. Pius. It's safe to go back to your church and place of worship. The attendance has been picking up a little bit, but please, please don't be afraid to come back to church. There's no reason, okay? As far as I know, there haven't been instances of extreme spreading in churches, so I just want to let the people of Lacey know that it's...
Let me interject if I can.
Say, sure.
Let me interrupt your comments. We tally that at the county health department, each municipality and how many infections each day. For the longest time, Lacey's averaged about 4.5, 4.7 per day. The last several days, it's been about 2. 2 into about 30,000 is nearly a statistical zero. I'm not here to minimize anything.
Right.
I know how serious this has been, but I tell my well-intentioned people who want to continue to shelter and not be part of the world at large, 2 in 30,000. Are you worried about, are you that concerned with winning the pick five today? Because it's roughly the same.
Yeah.
You've done very, very well, the people in this town, I'm very, very proud of them. They've done well. They followed some of the directions, they followed most of the directions, and I do believe we're out of this. And I, let me parse those words, I think we're coming out of it, and we're beginning to see, and we're learning how to live with it. So I'm not a proponent of closing anything. How's the worship schools or businesses ever again?
Well, St. Pius brought back the holy water in August. We got bulletins again. We have some, you know, hand-to-hand contact, and, you know, I'm just pleased to see people returning to church, but I think more people could come, and I don't want them to be afraid. Masks are optional. You know, Father Richard took all the signs down, so, you know, it's totally up to you. And there's lots of room to social distance in St. Pius.
Regina, if I can, just read an article. Churches are down 20% to 25% across the nation.
Really?
And the experts are saying, and it's not coming back.
Really?
It's not coming back. So it's going to be a problem. It's going to be a problem for a wall.
Well, I just wanted to say to people that it's safe to come back to church. Well, I just wanted to say to people that it's safe to come back to church.
No, you're right, you're right.
Whichever church you go to, wherever you go, it's safe to go back.
Yeah, yes.
Okay? Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, sir.
You can raise that up.
The knob right there.
That's not, wow, yeah, okay, that'll work.
You loosen it and then pull it, is that?
Yes.
There you go.
Good evening, my name is Richard Bidnick, it's been a long time since I've addressed this body, almost ten years ago. There's a couple of things I want to mention, there's been a lot of grumblings in town, and I'm, I talk to a lot of people, and a lot of people speak to me. There's been a lot of grumblings in town about the proposed idea of building a new municipal complex. And the idea is, is that right now, I don't know if you people are aware of it or not, but the citizens, many citizens in this community are really suffering, many lost their businesses, they aren't working like they used to, they're barely getting by, we have the highest inflation rate right now in thirty-one years, these are facts. And people are wondering like how they're going to be paying their taxes, paying for their medicine, paying for their food, and all their other expenses, and quite frankly, this really isn't something that's what I would call a dire necessity for this community. The big question I have is, and this is my feeling about it, and most other people, if you can figure out a way where you can build this Gilded Age Palace that you want to build, and not cost the taxpayers a penny of our money, then I'm sure you could get public support behind it, and I mean not a penny, not a lease for a couple million dollars a year, or anything like that. If you don't, there's going to be a fight, because a lot of people are talking about this now, a lot of people are hurting, and I, I honestly personally think it's very insensitive of this government body to be even considering something like this right now. There's also some talk about the school also wants to do something with pre-K and build a facility also, which is another thing that we, I will deal with the school board, but, you know, again, these schemes, and this is what I consider them, is this what the government bodies do, is they scheme together to try to figure out ways to just take the taxpayers' money and, and, you know, take it away from them? I don't remember a year in the fifteen or sixteen years since I built my home here, and I chose to live here because the taxes were low, that our taxes have ever gone down.
Or are you staying the same?
Yeah.
I've been there nine years.
I mean, I have never, ever seen, even during the financial crisis where, that we had in two thousand and eight, where all property values plummeted and everything else, you know, our taxes never went down, I mean, that was one of the things that started my citizens group called the Lacey Citizens for Responsible Government back then, was because government bodies were not being responsible to the needs of their community. Now, this is a Republican town, Republicans are supposed to be conservatives, fiscally conservative, I'm kind of like wondering, like, you know, where the logic is coming from this. Now, look, I know about the goings-on, I know about reasons why wanting to put everybody under one roof instead of having five different facilities, I know about, you know, some of the issues with upgrades for the air conditioning system, those type of things that are needed, but quite frankly, I understand as being a homeowner, there are upgrades that you need to make on the current facilities that you have, I mean, it's just, as buildings get older, they need new things, I mean, that's logic, and that could be worked into a budget for your facilities budget, but the idea of doing something like this, I think, is going to be an extremely big fight, I'm just saying that right now, and I don't think you really want to divide the town over something like this. We are all hurting, the public is hurting, and I, I just don't see the logic or the point, I mean, we all have to get by, you know, some of us would like to have a fantastic place with large offices and, you know, everything else, but quite frankly, it's just unrealistic, and we have to live within our means, whether we like it or not. So, that was one of my big concerns, another was, I've been having issues with code enforcement. This has been an ongoing issue, but one thing I want to bring up first is this, why don't we have an ordinance that you have to park your vehicles on an actual driveway? I've been dealing with a property that's right, now, I built a house, it's a very lovely small home in this town, and when I built the house, the lot next to me, which was owned by the property next door, was completely wooded, so I couldn't even see the property next to me, it had gone into foreclosure, and a property developer who has ten or eleven properties in this town bought the house and redid it, and there are renters in there, which is a problem unto itself, but the issue is that when he redid the property, he took all the trees down, so, that lot that was next to me then, was basically, there was like a ditch in there, and there was all kinds of crap that had built up in there, and it was just left open, and then the code enforcer forced them to actually have to fill it, because mosquitoes were filling it with water, it was a, you know, like a wetlands type thing. And so, since it's been filled in, the people who've been renting the property have been storing their trucks on that property, the employees would come in the morning, they would leave their cars, park it on, there'd be sometimes nine, ten, eleven vehicles on this property, in residential area, there are garbage all over the place, they would bring garbage from other locations, and actually bring it to this property, leave it on the property, in fact, one other person that's sitting here actually saw pictures that I took of about forty big, huge bags of insulation that was torn out of an old facility that they were working on, brought over to this property, and just thrown right out in the front in bags that were completely open. And so, I've had to have dealings with code enforcement over this property for quite some time, and now, they've been parking the trucks, they've been doing this, they've been coming at night, when it gets dark, they bring the trucks over to the property, and I was told that you're only allowed to have one commercial vehicle on your, on a residential property, and there have been more than that, and when I called code enforcement with the recent concerns that I've had about the garbage again, stuff going on, there was, they smashed a truck into the front porch, and the porch was, you know, the railings were off, you know, it was a code enforcement issue, I was told that because the code enforcement's officers' hours are only between eight-thirty and four-thirty, that there was nothing that they could do if people are violating the codes at night.
He doesn't see, he can't send a violation, and that's the problem.
I understand Veronica.
He needs authorization to work outside the normal hours.
Alright, Veronica, but he knows that this has been an issue.
But he has to see it, and he can't do it, but he has to witness it in order to issue the violation.
Okay, so I asked, since John lives in this town, right across from the lake where I live, that one night, he should have just drove, driven by, this was my recommendation, and I was told, not by him, but by his assistant, that, you know, that that's not possible, and I'm sorry.
If he's off duty, he's not required to go out and do the job, if he can get permission from his supervisor to adjust his hours to do so, he can do so.
Okay, well, that's a great idea.
So that's what needs to be done.
Right.
He did, you know, I mean.
I'm not saying, I'm just saying, it's frustrating for me, because I've been dealing with this for a while, and I have the only recourse.
I know, it is an open case, you are correct, there are violations out there, there are issues, you are a hundred percent correct, I'm familiar with the case.
Right.
I do believe, I don't even know if they live there all the time, because they have another house in town as well.
No, right, they don't, they haven't lived there in two years.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, we find, yeah, listen, everything you're saying is a hundred percent correct.
Yeah.
And there is an open case there, I don't know the status of it with the violations or the summonses or anything like that, you know, so, so I don't know if you followed up with him to see where it's at, and with the way the courts operate right now, it's very difficult to get somebody to appear.
I understand Veronica, I actually spoke to the landlord last week, he was there fixing the smashed-in, he said a truck, it's like, that's how I found out what happened, he told me what happened, and he was fixing it, and I explained to him, I said, "Look at the junk all over this property, it's blowing into my property, the, you know, why are you allowing this, people destroying this house?", I mean, like, and he, his whole response was, "Well, at least they're paying the rent."
It's very difficult to evict people right now.
I know, I know it is, but the issue is, is that I said to him, "You own the property, and you know what, if you're a good landlord, and people are complaining, you get under complaints." And you'd, you know, instead of me having to do it, I mean, I feel like I'm the code enforcer, because I'm the one who has to report the issues, and I have had to do this, because the stuff was going on, and nobody was checking it out, and I have to go, and I have to do it, and I feel like I'm becoming like, you know, the policeman, and I don't want to be that.
Well, our code enforcement is based on caller-generated complaints, we don't go out and look for the problems in the complaints.
Okay, alright.
So it is based on a resident calling in a complaint, that's how it was always set up to be operated.
Okay, well, maybe we need to look into that, but, so, the thing too, is the idea about, now, John had told me a while ago, when they, about the truck issues on the property, he said that there was something about a master plan, because I was going to come to a meeting almost two years ago about this issue, and he said that there was supposedly some master plan that was being looked at, where you would only be able to park the vehicles on the driveway or the parking lot, well, I'm really going to be a proponent for pushing for that, because it really, I lived in a nice community where I live by the lake, and that is, is a problem.
So, several years ago, when Mr. Quinn was still on the committee, we had reviewed various ordinances as it relates to trailers on properties, multiple vehicles, so on, only parking in a driveway and having it recognized, paved or improved driveway, some of those did fall by the wayside, because there wasn't support to do those things, because it does have to get approved by the planning board and then come to us to adopt.
Right.
So there wasn't support to adopt and change some of those things, and to limit parking only in driveways, or to not limit, let's say, a forty-six-foot RV being parked in a yard without it going into a backyard and stuff, there wasn't support to adopt those ordinances.
This is a good segue.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm going to try and jump in on a bunch of things here. Okay, so, so, we start with the municipal complex, so that came about, been here a long time, you know, my whole life, went through all the schools, Linnick Harbor School all the way through to high school, so this town has developed in a way that probably nobody anticipated, you know, Lacey Road's now four lanes, we have, we went from one traffic light to probably fifteen or twenty, I don't know how many are here right now. And, you know, as time went on, the areas, the commercial areas, the only spots we could pull ratables from are Route Nine and Lacey Road. So, my opinion, that we, we have too many properties, too many government properties that are on our commercial corridors, that are the only ratable property we have, we're not collecting any tax money off these properties. So, you know, we, you know, sort of kicked around different ideas, and the, the point of, you know, sort of, master planning the community is, it takes an incredibly long time to do anything, so, you know, it's taken almost ten years just to get to this point where we've been discussing it, and that doesn't mean that's going to happen, you know, there's a lot of, there's still a lot of discussions that have to go in, there's, you know, a lot of math to be done, but it's not just one building, it's also, you know, it's a wreck, 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 wreck complex.
I understand.
And again, it doesn't mean it's going to happen, but we have a piece of property that's sitting there that's less desirable than our commercial property, like I said, we should all be getting, you know, they should be collecting tax money off these. So, you know, again, it takes a long time to plan that stuff, and it's the same thing with the master plan, we just, it never seems to get around to addressing some of these things on the master plans, it just takes such a long time to get to them.
But why is that? See, this is the thing.
Because we get bogged down in other, a lot of reasons.
Right, there is a lot of reasons, and this.
And, and wait, just, not, I mean, cut you off, but it's the same reason, it's similar to this, as I was talking about the Starbucks before, you really need people that are invested in the, in, you know, in the town, I'm not saying that, you know, that we're not, if you're paid taxes here, you're investing in town, but you really have to have people that understand what they're looking at, and, and, you know, why you're trying to make the changes you're trying to make.
Right, but there's one thing that I know, because my life has been lived this way, with drive, determination, and focus, you can do anything, what I find is with bureaucracies and with governments, that they don't have drive, determination, and focus, and I'm not meaning to be critical, I'm just stating a fact, we see this in our whole country, the way everything's falling apart right in front of our eyes, but, the issue is, is that, we are smaller, we are not a very large, this is not like, you know, a big, big town, I don't understand for the life of me, and I don't have the patience, and I'm, I'm sorry, I as a taxpayer, I'm sick of excuses, I get excuses every day, I deal with the school board with all their problems, I get excuses from them, eighty million dollars we're paying in taxes for what I consider a below, very below par school district, that should be a lot better, and so, here, we are paying our taxes here, we're smaller, why are these things not happening? Now, you people are the elected officials, and it is for me and other people to come to you and say, "Why are you not getting the job done?", and if you're not able to get the job done, then we need to get people who will get the job done. Okay, so, I'm saying to you, more power to you, if there is a way, seriously, that you can figure out to build a new complex that you want to build, where it will not cost the taxpayers one penny, I'm sure you could get the community behind that. Right now is not a good time to be doing this, I'm just saying, it's just not a good time.
No, I agree, no, I agree, I read quite a bit, and I'm fully aware of, you know, the price of gas, the price of oil and stuff like that.
Right, it's just going, and we don't know when it's going to happen.
So, and again, this is the, you know, this is not something that, you know, you can't, it's not even something where you flip a switch, you know, and it would have to start happening tomorrow, it takes still years.
It can be, I, I understand, but this is what I'm saying, things get bogged down, they aren't a priority, who makes the priorities? This is the issue, and what is the priority? That's the point. Exactly.
I can answer, well.
I know where the priorities are, so, it's kind of like, I'm just saying to you as a taxpayer, and as someone who will be very vocal, if you, if you decide to go forward with this, I will be very vocal, and I will be very involved with the citizens in this community who are struggling, I mean, I want the town to always succeed, that is my point, but I also believe in fiscal restraint, fiscal responsibility, and being able to get the best bang for your buck out of the dollar, because, you know, you're, when you, if you were sitting up on this body, and you thought of that budget that you have as if it was your own bank account, and every time you had to write a check, it was coming out of your own pocketbook, you would look at this very differently, and as a person who has run nonprofit institutions in my life, that's the way I ran them, like it was my money, and I did it, all of it, on, cheap, really.
You should talk to our CFO, because that's exactly the way it is, trust me, we get denied for like an eighty-nine cents, they will remove her, okay? That's what she does, okay? This is how, that's how nickel and dime, she nickels and dimes.
I know, but what about the contracts? Wait a minute, the contracts, the employee contracts are where all the money goes, I know about all this stuff, you know, that this is, numbers are my thing, the contracts, this body negotiates all of the employment contracts, the raises, I have a question.
With labor counts.
Tonight, you gave, you gave a five percent increase, I heard, but you didn't even allow us to be able to come up, it was like, closed to the public immediately, I'm sorry, some of us.
Probably would have liked to have gotten up here and spoken about it.
She opens the public, and no one raised her hand.
It was like two seconds.
Oh. Well, you want to come up and speak about it, or you doubt this topic?
Look, so anyway.
It was literally two seconds and closed, I'm just telling you guys.
As a taxpayer, I am saying this on behalf of a lot of people.
Five percent for two years.
Okay.
Two and a half percent for you.
Okay. The question is that you didn't even say that either, it was just five percent, that's the other.
I said five percent over two years.
Well, the way it was stated, I don't think most of us even understood that, I'm just saying, and you do, Veronica, I know you got to go through.
I know I talk very fast, and I've had for the thirty-some years I've been sitting here.
I would suggest, and so there are other people here maybe not as quick to pick up on stuff, that you might just, when you're doing stuff like that in particular, you might want to just slow it, this is just a tip that I'm, I'm giving you, because I actually missed that.
Mr. Bidnick, this is in its infancy, to say anything different just wouldn't be accurate, there's going to be meetings upon meetings, there's going to be input from the, from the public.
I understand.
One thing for certain, listen, nobody's more tighter than I am with money, these guys will tell you, we argue pretty good sometimes.
I know, but I'm going to.
But I'm going to tell you this, what my colleagues say is true, in, in the sense that we have huge swaths of property in the town, in community hall, where the Forked River School is, of this spot, and we're not getting any tax revenue from it.
Right.
And when I listen to my colleague with many, many years, Stephen Kenneth, in land use experience, that's true, and when you look down the road, what are we missing in all these spots each and every year? That's, that's funds that aren't, that's ratables that aren't being realized.
Right.
So, long-term, and Steve can jump in, but, but he's right, in that sense, he's right, now, is this the best time? That's up for debate.
Well, I'm not questioning, I'm not questioning the idea of what properties you own and you could sell, and what tax revenue it could bring, all I am concerned about is the bottom line and the penny of, you, as I said, if you could figure out a way to do this.
Absolutely.
We agree on some of it.
Right. I mean, I've heard something about getting some developer to come in and build this thing, and then you're going to lease back, but that's still going to cost the taxpayers' money.
It's called the P3 is what we're looking at, which is a public-private partnership, which is right, so it's.
But you'd still be paying, right, Veronica?
No, I'm not saying that, but it's called a public-private partnership, so, and it's a new legislation that was introduced, but adopted by the state of New Jersey in two thousand and eighteen, for value range, and everything still has to be paid, but yeah, that, that, that is some, and the state of New Jersey supports these public-private partnerships because it allows it to be done, more cost-effectively than us design, building, and piecing it together. We had a proposal, we have to go through the process now, and satisfy certain parts of the legislation before we pull the trigger to do anything, this is a long way off before we do anything, so, as a hundred and twenty days pass the laps, we can sit down with this person who put, this company that put in the unsolicited proposal, and we can say thank you, but no thank you.
Right, and I understand that, I know nothing's been signed, I'm just saying, right now, there are a lot of grumblings in this town, and I'm telling you, if you think you're going to try to do this without there being a fight.
There's a long process though.
I understand that, and maybe it will outlive all of us, you know, which could be like a very long time, but I'm telling you, you've been talking about this, Veronica, now, I have been coming to these meetings since two thousand and ten, and you have been talking about wanting to have a new, a new, hey.
Probably since two thousand and fourteen, Mr. Kenneth.
Right, and look, a lot of us that live here in town probably would like to have a new house, or a larger house, or a new kitchen or something, but you know, every penny that you take from us is something that we can put back in the community that helps support our economy.
Right, so, so, I agree, I agree with all that, so, but also don't forget that we also spend a lot of money upgrading and maintaining and just band-aiding the facilities that we have now, which I feel is a waste of money.
Okay, but who's, all facilities, no matter what.
No, no, you have to, so it is, it's, I'm not, again, it's a, there's a balance there, I'm not, I'm not dispute, I'm, I'm not disputing your point.
Right. As I said, hey, if there is some magic wand where you can do it, you'll get the support from the community.
Mr. Bidnick.
Yes.
When you say you people, don't fluff this all together, I'm not in favor of a new complex.
Okay.
Do you understand?
I wasn't sure about that.
And one of, no, I put it out, well, you should be, because I put it out on social media, and I, I've expressed that, one of the reasons I'm not in favor of it is basically, my concern is that this property would be redeveloped for, at high-density residential, because it's part of an inclusionary zone, so, I'm definitely at this point in time not in favor until such time where we can guarantee that this, this or any property would be developed as commercial property.
I know.
Not high-density, so basically.
But you've got a dump underneath this building.
So, believe me, we've had, we've had, we've had conversations in reference to this, and to say we're nowhere near and that we're all in favor, and say.
I didn't say, I didn't, you, I don't know who's in favor, I don't, that isn't the point.
Well, then, that's what I'm just trying to clarify.
I'm just, I'm just saying to you that this is what people are talking about, it's been, I've known about this for quite some time, and I said I would not come out until I knew a little bit more information, and I have more information, so, the point is, is that, you know, I'm just telling you that this could be a really unfortunate fight in the community that we really don't need to be having right now.
Right.
And we all have dreams and aspirations for a lot of things, and maybe this is one of those that's going to have to be put along to the side, just like the master plan that's been sitting around that has not been done, so, with that, I appreciate you giving me the time, and as I said, it's been a long time since I have come.
See you in ten years.
Well, I don't think that may be the case, but maybe it will be, who knows, thank you very much.
Any other comments from the floor?
Hello, Amanda Baron, Lakeview Court, Forked River, I know you all remember me from two meetings back, and I do want to let you know that we in the area have noticed a lot of things happening for the safety of the rail trail, and I want to thank you all for that, in behalf of all the other parents who couldn't be here tonight, and be here tonight and the other residents in the area. I've also started spreading the word on social media as well, I posted a picture of the camera system, and there's also a sign over there for, I guess, a new ordinance of no smoking, no open alcoholic beverages, which will help us, um, get those people removed when they are over there for most of their time. So, I, I just wanted to come back and thank you all for that.
And it's ongoing.
Yeah, I, I hope so, because...
The ATVs out there physically walking it.
Yeah, I, I hope so. We, we've seen a little bit of the ATVs back and forth, um, not as much as we thought we'd see, I mean, there's a lot of us looking out, but it's happening. So, I just wanted to thank you guys for putting the wheels in motion, I know it can't happen all overnight, but I did want to thank you all for taking what we brought to you and really acting on it rather quickly for the safety of the community. I did want to direct one comment to you, Veronica, and that was that when you were reading through, I absolutely would have said public comment, or at least tried to ask you a question or clarification, but you really went through that so fast about the raises that we really had no choi, no, no opportunity. So, in the future, if there is gonna be anything on the agenda that is allowed for public comment, I would just...
Second meeting's are always public comment, and of course, what you're doing right now is allowed as well.
Okay, so, um, you know, I, I would have asked, like, what positions they were, you know, who made the decision that it was gonna be two and a half, over two years, I mean, there, there were some things that I, I just would have...
You can ask those questions now, if you'd like to. You don't have, yeah, you can still ask those questions.
Oh, okay, well, in the school board, once, once something's closed, you're not allowed to go, but, I'm sorry, so...
Now, having said that, we, we have, we have voted on...
I know you did, right.
With second reading, you might come up here and you might convince us to vote a different way, so, so it is, you know, we're so used to the...
I understand, I understand.
And you're saying people, so you're all new people, so...
Right, so, so going forward, I would just ask that, you know, maybe you just, just slow it down for, for certain things, or, or whatever, because even some of the other things that you guys were discussing, um, I, I also would love to tell you that I would love to bring my kids out tomorrow at eleven o'clock, but they'll be in school. In our town, school is open tomorrow.
Yeah, most schools are open now, though, you're not that...
Not all schools, but...
Most.
Most in our area.
Right.
Um, you go up to Monmouth County, they're closed, and so I just want you to know, when you encourage all of us to bring our kids, a lot of us would love to, but they'll be in school tomorrow.
Even so far, I do believe they, they do a parade, and they have the schools participate and, and come out and, like, make brief laying ceremonies and stuff like that, so, so I, I know that, and maybe that's something...
So, if we wanted to do that, do we have to petition the Board of Ed to do something like that?
Ask them to encourage, and I, from the governing body, they can also suggest as an educational component of a curriculum to do something like that, because this is all forgotten, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's very important, so, and, and I want my kids, my kids know that when they see a man with a, a hat that says he's a veteran of any war, or, you know, USS whatever, my kids are nine, twelve, and nineteen, and they know that they are expected to go up to that person and give a good handshake and thank them for their service, no matter where we are or what we're doing, they need to stop having fun and go thank that person, because it's very important. So, I agree with you all on that. And then the last thing I wanted to comment on is the municipal complex that we've been discussing, so I will tell you that, um, if you don't know me from the Board of Ed meetings, I am a very vocal person, and I am a very influential person with a lot of the parents in this town. So, um, I will be watching it very closely, and I would appreciate if you could give us, the community, as much information as possible, and notice of meetings and conversations, or, you know, summaries, don't just keep it amongst yourselves, because you will have a huge fight back at the end when you think you might be getting things actually rolling, so that, just a word of caution, and, and let you know that our eyes are open, our ears are open, we are watching everything, especially regarding that, because we do not think that an excess of sixty million dollars is worth a new municipal complex, no matter what the...
Yes, that's why you're there. And again, this municipal complex wasn't just a municipal complex. How do you feel about an indoor recreation center for the youth in our community?
We, we need to see plans, we need to understand, I mean, you know, we can't just say we're gonna spend this much money on this complex, that's good, that's good information to broadcast to the public so that we can get together amongst ourselves, or whatever. I, I with Mr. Bynick are, are restarting our Lacey Township Coalition for Change group, so that'll be, will be focused here and will be focused with the Board of Ed. So, I'm just letting you know that you will be seeing more people at these meetings, and we will be listening and watching and wanting to learn more and more about what is going on. So, okay, thank you, thank you all for your time.
Any other comments to see?
Mayor, good to see you. Nice meeting you last month for the first time. My name's John Murphy, I've been in town eight and a half years, and I'm kind of voicing what everybody else is voicing. First of all, thank...
Mr. Murphy, I'm sorry to interrupt you, address please, sir.
Uh, twenty-four Ridgemont Drive in Lenoka Harbor. Uh, thank you for doing the Veterans Day ceremony tomorrow, I appreciate it. It is a shame that the kids can't make it, um, because it's school day, my son will be playing taps, by the way, so anybody that can go, the Grady's done it for like the last five years, which is great. Um, I want to thank all you for your service, okay, we're not, I'm not just here to, you know, yell at people, and, you know, I appreciate, I really appreciate what you do. But in my opinion, this country is going in the wrong direction, and we don't have to get into all that, but it's just, you know, I don't even want to get into it. But I don't know enough about this new town hall, and, and I don't want to be, you know, speaking, I, I want to learn more about it, Mark, real interested with your comments, and be interested in your support. Right now, to even talk about it is very arrogant, you know, I don't even really want to hear about it. I don't know enough about how much ratables, and I should know this more, and I apologize that I don't, but I don't know how many ratables we lost with the power plant, Worcester Creek...
No, absolutely nothing.
No, okay, Veronica, that's, that's great, I knew there was some, I didn't know exactly, is that gonna change?
It will change as they, um, demolish the buildings, um, at, you know, at the site, because that's the improvement value there, uh, but they plan on redeveloping the site as to what, yeah, who knows, there are other parcels that are not owned by Whole Tech that aren't being purchased for the, um, winter vines.
Right.
So, they're gonna go, um, have a higher ratable on, on the site as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Whole Tech, I mean, they've taken on a lot of these projects.
And they're saying they're the power plant property themselves.
Right.
They pay two-point-five million dollars a year in real estate taxes, seventeen percent of that comes to the municipality, and then sixty-seven percent goes to the schools, and the rest goes to the county, just so you...
Oh, nice, no, that's, that's great.
...realize the cost breakout as to where that goes.
Thank you.
So, that's, if, if they were, again, you'll always get a tax ratable for the land, even if it was vacant.
Okay.
You know, so there will be taxes being paid.
Great. And as long as we're, you know, fiscal, fiscal responsible, you know, are responsible spending that money, because Washington's got a real problem with spending money, and, you know, everything's going crazy with what's going on in this country. You know, Lacey football team were up in Rumson, I mean, you know, Rumson's where the one percenters live, and that's great, they got plenty of money up there, it's a nice town, but I've been here eight years, and my taxes have gone up twenty-five percent, okay? And I, I'm not, you know, I, I do okay, I got laid off last year, um, you know, I, I'm willing to pay my fair share of taxes, and the schools get a good amount, and I still think the schools do a fairly good job, but I can't judge it like other people, because people have told me that the schools, you know, are nothing what they were fifteen years ago. I know some of the board people really well, I, I'm thankful for the schools, but I'm just getting worried that, you know, and I'm not accusing any of you folks, but I'm done with the Rhinos, I, I'm done with what's going on in the country, in Washington, and I don't want this town to follow that way. And I will fight whoever I have to to keep it that way. So, um, thank you for social media, because I just want, I found out about this meeting, but, you know, now, Veronica, you mentioned about this parcel of land, this, what, you want this as a ratable, is that what's going on?
Yeah, that's what, that's what Mr. Kennas said, yes, right, I mean, obviously, we don't pay taxes ourselves, right?
Right.
So, if you had this built into a ratable, they would be paying taxes here on Highway Frontage, you know, businesses look for where the high visibility spots are to build.
Sure.
So, could something be built here, sure, could something be built at the corner of Lacey Road and Route Nine?
I get it.
That's, that's a good, you know, corner.
Well, this sixty million, and I'm sorry, I don't know, how much is allocated to a recreation center? Or is that too early to really tell?
That's way too early.
It's really too, it's in its infancy stages, because we're still developing the concept of that vote process.
But you can understand why it is not looking good right now.
And each meeting that, 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 um, the residents have come to, this number keeps creeping up, and I'm like, where that's coming from?
But you can understand why people are not really interested in this right now.
John, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We had gone and visited a recreation center in Marlton, um, and beautiful facility, and it's actually zero cost because they do bring in revenue. So, their, their cost is about eight, ten million, but because they, they lease out and rent out the facility, it's a zero cost, it brings in money, so that's something to consider as well.
Right, you have to look at all the, I don't know what happens if...
And that's all part of the process that, that we look at. You look at the savings in your utilities by being more efficient and all of that.
Right, so we, we've just started, like dipped our toe, dipped our toe in the water right now.
Okay.
And what was out on social media, I did see it, was simply a proposal, okay? Have we batted it around? Of course we have, we'd be crazy if we didn't bat it around. Has it changed? Yeah, it's gone from one, it's gone from one to a hundred, back to one to fifty, it's been, it's been all over the place.
Okay.
You know, we're gonna, we will do the right thing for Lacey Township. The idea, and I agree with Mr. Kennas on this, is to get these properties to start producing taxes, not only for the township, but for the school district, okay? Because they get sixty-seven percent of every tax dollar goes to the school district. Let me give you an example, four years ago, I pulled the TD Bank tax records down there on the corner of Lacey Road...
No, well, I banked with them for years before it was Congress. Remember the twenty-five years?
Back then, they were paying forty-five thousand dollars a year in taxes, that property there. So, you can guess that the property across the street is gonna come pretty close to what, depending on what's built on that, paying the same thing.
Right.
And that's gonna be forever.
Sure.
Okay, so if we can get these properties where they're producing some tax revenue, to me, that's a good sign.
Sure.
And I'll give you another example, when we met with some of these people about this, I haven't, I brought up the fact that, as an example, let's say we sold this building, police department, and community hall, and let's say we got ten million dollars, hypothetically.
Sure.
We would then be able to take that ten million dollars and pay down the principal, which would then be able to reduce any payment that we had. We're, we're, we're going through this, we're gonna dot the i's, we're gonna cross the t's, anybody who wants to know anything, send me an email, send me your phone number, and I will call you and talk, I'll meet with you in person.
Right.
I'll go over everything.
And I want to segue that, it's very difficult to, you know, discuss some of these things, because there's not a real good forum to do it. Here is really the only forum, you can't do it on social media, that doesn't...
No, I understand.
So, it's very hard to get information out, a lot of people get bored over, you know, some of this information.
Well, it's not hard to get information out, you can get it out to the people.
But sometimes it's also in translation, it's...
Yeah, so, it's...
Not, not if it's coming from, yeah, that's true, but if it came from a source of the town posting it, and I don't know if that's...
Yeah, but sometimes you can't explain it enough, or it's understanding in words.
Yeah, it's hard, yeah, you have to explain in person, you have to be able to...
Because right now, there's no photos, there's no plans, there's no, nothing to show, so you can, you know, it's always, when you have a visual, it's great.
John, we meet constituents all the time.
Yeah, no, and I'm sorry, because I, I haven't been involved, I've never been to a meeting.
And that, and that's a lot that nobody shows up.
You know, so, I'm not, I'm not trying to accuse you guys or anything, I'm just, I've never been to a meeting, I just see that come up, that, you know, just not good times.
I get, I get your concern, and I think everybody up here has that concern.
Right.
Um, and, and, you know, this is our town too, we pay the taxes too, you're right, our taxes have gone up every year, but again, this is, you know, and I said this on, on a video when we had the parade, we're working with what the previous committees planned for this town, and they did a really good job, and I think we got a really good town. And so what we're doing is gonna be planning for what the next generation of township committee members are gonna have to deal with.
Right.
So, we have, we're trying to do that as best we can, and, and, you know, there's all kinds of things, we're gonna have to see, what do we cost, this building's sixty years old, so what it's gonna, gonna cost us to get this building up to twenty-twenty-two standards?
Right.
What's that gonna cost? What's it, we have a problem with the police department, because the jails aren't up to code, so if we touch that building, guess what we gotta do? We gotta add on and change the jails.
Right.
Okay?
Sure.
What's that gonna cost? And if we want to bring everybody under one umbrella, and we had to put an addition on between here and the police department, what would that cost?
No, I get it.
And so, the, and then, I mean, can you give you an example? If it cost us twenty million dollars, because we have to pay prevailing wage, which would you rather have? To put it into this, to renovate this, or take that twenty million dollars and put it into a new complex and get this property producing tax revenue?
No, makes sense.
This is the stuff we have to go through.
No, I, I totally understand, I, I do ROIs all the time for people and total cost of ownership, I get it, you know, you have to do a cost.
Sure, sure, sure.
I appreciate that.
So, that's, that's where, that's where we're trying to figure out, what's the best way to do this, to get this, to get this for the town.
Makes sense, because if not, I mean...
We might not do it.
Yeah, yeah.
And again, the bureaucracy you're talking about is that there's, the police training commission has to weigh in, the local finance board of the state of New Jersey has to weigh in, the administrative office of the courts have to weigh in, so while we may want to do this, they're gonna say, no, now you need to do all of these things, because there's all these state mandates and regulations. I mean, our jails, yes, they fail all the time, but since our building, um, is not under renovations, and depending on how much renovations you do, we don't have to bring them up to grade, we're supposed to have a Sally Court, so unfortunately, if one of us was arrested, you were arrested, whoever, you have privacy when you're being brought into the back of headquarters versus everybody at Wawa being able to see you, you know?
Right, no, I know there's a lot of...
So, there's certain standards that we have to do, and they're gonna eventually mandate us to do it.
Right, right, unfortunately, Chittorelli didn't win governor, I mean, I met him a week and a half ago right here in town, had a nice conversation with him, you know, I personally hope, wish, you know, would have been in the right direction if he was there. But I can tell you that recreational weed will pass if we get too much stress. Because I'll need it to get, if, if it doesn't go through, and we don't work together and taxes go up, uh, you know, maybe that's not gonna get defeated, I'm gonna have to start smoking some weed, I don't know about the rest of you, but, uh, thank you very much for your time, I appreciate, thank you for informing me, and I'll become more...
Anytime, anytime.
Any other comments? Yes?
Hi there.
Hi.
I'm Kristin, I live at three-twenty-five Lawrence Drive in Lenoka Harbor, and I'm just here for an update on the noise ordinance, two forty-two. here for an update on the noise ordinance, two-forty-two.
Yes, thank you. The governing body will be receiving information from me as a result of the research that I've done with regard to the noise ordinance. The Noise Control Act was adopted back in nineteen-seventy-one, there have been a number of regulatory changes that have been made to the act, which has caused some municipalities to fall out of compliance with regard to enforcement of their noise ordinance. The Department of Environmental Protection has put together a model noise ordinance, it's quite comprehensive, it may not be the best fit for Lacey Township, but what I have done is looked at other municipalities, determine which municipalities have ordinances which have been approved, but not necessarily in conformance with the model ordinance. And so, what I'm going to do is share with the governing body those ordinances as well as the model ordinances, and see which one is the best fit for Lacey Township. The noise ordinance, some procedural issues that are required as well, and among them are the fact that if there's a model ordinance, it has to be approved by the DEP after adoption, but if it's not the model ordinance, it has to be approved by DEP before adoption. So, the timeframes in which the ordinances are adopted may change based upon whether it's a model ordinance or the non-model ordinance, but in any event, the non, I'll call them non-model ordinances generally approach the noise issue as more of a nuisance complaint. The biggest difference is they don't use the parameters of a, a noise gauging instrument like a decibel meter, but instead utilize timeframes in which certain noises may or may not, or certain activities associated with those noises may or may not.
I've had to live with twelve hours sometimes.
Yeah.
Twelve hours a day of like a commercial sound system that blares inside my home. When I have everything shut, I can still hear inside my home as if I'm listening to the radio.
And those standards, rather than using a decibel meter, would be the number of feet.
Right.
In which someone with, you know, normal hearing would be able to discern the noise, whether it be outside noise or inside.
It's not even the treble, it's the bass. The bass is unreal in my home.
And in fact, the model ordinance that uses a decibel meter sets bass as opposed to other aspects of the noise. So, the bass is used as actual the measurement, so the bass could be the most disturbing of all of it, actually, whether it coming from a car, even cars driving by, they have loud bass.
Yeah, I'll take that, that's just blown on by, when I was like today, for example, was four hours.
Now.
Four and a half hours, actually.
Now, my, the issue, the.
Music, four and a half hours of just bass as if I was in a club.
Do they want?
Well, he's, he's a contractor, and I don't know what he does because he's home every day at twelve o'clock, sometimes before. I don't know how he makes his money, he goes on vacations, they go away, and they come back, and he's home at twelve o'clock every day, I have no idea what he does.
The, the, one of the difficulties that I could see in the model ordinance that uses the sound level measuring instrument is that you obviously need someone who's a noise control officer, and the only person that would be able to enforce the parameters of the ordinance, you can have a noise control investigator that can go out and investigate,